All right, it is 6:00 PM and I would like to call this special meeting to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Robin, please call the roll.
Hayden Chumposi, here.
Vaughn, here.
Loudon?
Hi, here.
Ryer?
Here.
Kringle?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Carpenter Davis?
Here.
Tosi?
Here.
All right, since this is a special meeting, we will only be addressing the items listed on our agenda this evening, which include a public hearing for the Rock Creek Tax Increment Financing District Number Four Redevelopment Project Plan, a tax increment financing ordinance for the Rock Creek TIFF District Number Four, a task order for design of the 7301 Johnson Drive Storm Sewer Project, and an animal sheltering services contract. First, for public hearings, we have one public hearing this evening related to the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, Rock Creek TIFF District Number Four. I will now officially open the public hearing. Laura, will you begin your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And if it's all right with you, I might ask if there's anybody in the audience who is here specifically for this item that was not here at our committee meeting. Okay, so rather than put you all through the presentation, that meeting is videotaped. That's available to anybody who might want to watch that. I will just hit a couple of the high points. Devin Coffey with Millhouse is here this evening and will be available, I'm sure, to answer any questions that you might have. The one thing that I will do after just kind of a quick recap is ask Mr. Kevin Wimpy of Gilmore and Bell to kind of quickly step through the amendments to the performance agreement. That was really the newest piece that we shared with you all last evening. Pretty straightforward, but want to make sure that, since we didn't cover that in the public hearing previously, that we do that this evening. So as you know, this is a TIFF project plan that has been submitted by the city essentially to allow us to access TIFF increment that has accumulated and will accumulate through July of 2027 to be reimbursed or be provided to the developer, who would be reimbursed for sanitary sewer, water, or storm sewer infrastructure improvements associated with the development of their multifamily project known as Mission Beverly. And as we walked through, these are additional costs that have been identified as they moved into the construction drawing stage and the actual location of the various infrastructure facilities. And so in order to be able to accommodate the relocations and the upgrades, they are looking at about an additional $2.1 million in costs related to those infrastructure improvements. Some of those were accounted for in the original performance agreement approved in February of 2024. But as I mentioned, those costs have increased since that time. So we are not looking to close that entire gap for the developer through this process, but we believe that the TIFF District Number Four will generate approximately $350,000 in increment by the time we are ready to issue IRBs for this project. And so we have recommended that the council consider approving an amendment to the performance agreement that would contribute those TIFF increment revenues at that point. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the mechanics of the TIFF District Four and the increment. I'm sure Ms. Coffey could answer any questions you have about the project. If not, I would invite Mr. Wimpy up to walk us through the amendments to the performance agreement.
Right, thanks, Laura. Hi, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell, joined tonight by my colleague Chanel Perez as well. Nice to see you all again. Thanks for the brief history there, Laura. So the amended performance agreement tonight is amending and restating the agreement from early 2024, which set forth a 75% tax abatement for the project and also the purchase price for Beverly Park that's being incorporated into the project. As Laura mentioned, there's infrastructure costs have risen as the projects tried to get going in the last year. And so this is attempting to address or alleviate some of that upfront infrastructure cost that's causing the issue with the project. So the two main financial levers we're pulling, so to speak, is one, accessing the TIFF fund to defray some of that infrastructure cost for sanitary storm sewer type costs at an amount of not to exceed $350,000. We have a limited timeframe to access that TIFF revenue because as we've discussed before, TIFF and IRB property tax abatement can't exist on the same project. They are prohibited by statute, but also practically speaking, we're both, one abates and the other defrays or diverts property taxes. So in any event, the next couple of years during construction period, we can access those TIFF funds to defray infrastructure costs. The second financial lever we're pulling is that $500,000 purchase price for the park is being delayed in part. And instead, upfront, the company will pay $25,000 and delay the rest of the $475,000 until completion of the project and issuance of the industrial revenue bonds. So those two things are the key components, as well as resetting the schedule because you'll recall there's an exhibit that has milestones along the way. And due to the delay to get here tonight, we've reset those. And you can see that in the exhibit to the performance agreement. So the action tonight after the public hearing is consideration of an ordinance adopting a TIFF project plan and authorizing execution of that amended and restated performance agreement. Under the TIFF statute, it requires a two-thirds vote of the governing body to approve a TIFF plan. And approving that TIFF plan will allow us to access the TIFF funds and reimburse infrastructure costs. And again, it also authorizes execution of the amended and restated agreement. With that, that's all the prepared remarks I had, but I'm happy to try to address any questions.
Questions for Kevin? Yeah, Debbie?
Kind of a comment slash question. You know, we have a development at the other end of town that had assurances that their financial stability was in line. Everything was okay. And I know things have gotten expensive. What kind of assurance do we have that this developer will continue its commitment to the city in an investment property? And we don't have to worry about something going awry relative to their financial fee?
Sure, so like with any development agreement, we're seeking to defray the city's risk and delaying the city's contribution until we have some strong indication that the project's going to proceed. And so in this case, the first money from the city to support the project would be the TIFF funds. And in order to access those TIFF funds in the agreement, the developer has to complete or cause to be completed the waterline relocation that I think we discussed in detail last week. And second, also has to commence a program of construction on the stormwater costs. And those are the costs we're reimbursing with those funds. And while that may not result in vertical construction, we've talked at length about how those types of improvements would need to be made, whether this project proceeded or it was a future project in the event this one didn't develop as we envisioned. And the second assistance from the city is through the IRBs with property tax abatement, as well as sales tax exemption on construction materials and furniture fixtures and equipment. And I'd say there's an element of IRBs and those two incentives that's a little bit self-regulating in that they only get the benefit of those two incentives if the project's completed and the bonds are issued. And so the developer does have to go perform, complete the project timely under the agreement for the city to be compelled to issue those bonds. So there's some built-in assurances on the IRB side, just under practical and statutory construction.
Any other council questions? Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, Kevin, how you doing? I certainly don't anticipate this being the case, but just since we're deferring that payment for the land, what's the city's remedy if that's already been transferred and improved, if that payment were to fall through for any reason?
Right, so the upfront payment as the property is deeded over is at $25,000. And so there's a balance that would be paid at completion. In this instance, there's always risk if you're asking someone to pay you a little bit later than you otherwise would. So there's a time element and performance element. And what we've built into the agreement is that before, the city has a repurchase right? And until they commence a continuous program of construction on the site, should they fail to do that by the time period stipulated in the agreement, the city has the option to repurchase the property for the $25,000.
Okay.
There's some practical limitations where that repurchase right would have to go away in order for them to access traditional debt financing because a lender is not going to allow a city lien or city to impair their collateral. But before that lien or before the city's repurchase right is relinquished, the developer will need to make a showing that they have closed a loan and has the financing to proceed with the project, that they have a signed construction loan, or I'm sorry, a signed construction agreement and have directed their general contractor to proceed with construction, as well as commencing site work on the site. So that, we're taking it up to its practical limit and having them show really strong indication that the project's going to be completed. Is that the point they close a construction loan, they'll not only have their interest in completing the project, it'll be a lender standing beside them insisting that they proceed as well?
Fair enough, but there may be a period or will be a period, I suppose, where the construction will have taken place, but the rest of the money hasn't been paid yet. And that's our sort of critical period. Do I understand that right?
Right, right. And you know, this group, I know it's dealt with economic development bond finance projects as well. And this is pretty similar situation for the city having to think like, like a lender, think like a bond issuer, where these strong showings of the developer and its lender that they're committed to the project have to be in place before the city relinquishes its rights to impose that repurchase.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, Wanda?
I just have some clarification. I'm just asking because I think early on, I heard that one of your investors had backed out. Is that a problem or is that incorrect?
If that's a question for the developer, I think I'll step aside and let Ms. Coffey address that.
We, Devin Coffey, Millhouse Development, we've not had anyone back out. I don't know where, if I said something, I may have been referencing like a fear that they could back out or, but we have not had anyone back out necessarily. We've got actually more people interested now today than we had before, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I might ask Ms. Coffey, just to respond to Councilmember Kringle's question about just historical performance of Millhouse on other projects.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we've never walked away from a project that we've started. We are over seven figures deep into this out of pocket currently, just in pre-development expense. And with the scenario of how this has all played out with the waterline relocation itself, the waterline impacts the two properties that are on Dearborn. Those two properties cannot be transacted on until that line is moved because it is currently on the private property rather than in the right of way. So that property is encumbered. So our title company will not issue title insurance to us. Our lender will not let us get a loan on it unless we can get title insurance on it. So we would either have to get an easement put in place, have those people's property, the two people that own it currently condemned. Johnson County Waste Water, or I'm sorry, Water One takes their property, pays them for it, whole process. We have to move our building back 15 feet from where it is currently designed. So there's that path forward or the one that we've chosen, which is to not have to redesign our building, pay $570,000 approximately out of pocket to relocate that line before we even own the property. Like, we're paying that, we actually have to cut that check here in the next few weeks because there's a six-week lead time. We have to get that line relocated before we can close on the property. So, and it gets better because then we also have to now relocate the sanitary sewer line that goes across the north part of the site and goes across Dearborn. We actually have to do some work on that first, so more money out of pocket because that line is 18 feet deep, whereas the water main's only like 10 feet deep. So you can't do the work, you can't do the water line first and then have to come back in and do, oops, sorry, the sewer, the sanitary line after that. So we're trying to figure out how to minimize that cost. Like, I don't think it's going to be the full price of the sanitary line, which is another $500,000. We're working with them right now, trying to figure out, okay, what can we do to just do some of that sanitary work in the area where they cross? And then we can get the water line done and then the storm will come later. But anyway, we're going to be pretty deep into this and it's not going to be in our best interest to walk away.
This is for you and Laura. Since their costs have gone up exponentially, how much does that change the language in the TIFF?
It doesn't change the 75, so the original performance agreement, the tax abatement that was negotiated last year allows for a 75% abatement of those taxes. And that tax abatement is for a 10-year period of time as opposed to 20 years typically in a tax increment financing deal. So the only thing that is changing really with respect to that original agreement is that we have looked to find a way to provide some assistance for the infrastructure costs, and that's through the allocation of the TIFF increment, as well as then deferring, because it's these, as Ms. Coffey mentioned, these upfront costs, whether that's land acquisition or infrastructure relocation that are sort of driving this really critical pinch point at the beginning of the project. So that was part of the rationale in deferring that payment until such time as the IRBs are actually issued for the tax abatement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to public comments. So if there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, Rock Creek TIFF District Number Four, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comments? Yes, please come up to the lectern and state your name and city of residence.
Michelle Needens, I'm a parent of someone at the Mission Project, the at-home apartment over here. And more question than a comment. I wondered about the impact of the delayed payment for Beverly Park and if there would be other city impact, including the transition of Beverly Park to the top of Outlook, as has been discussed, would the delayed payment also include delaying the transition of Beverly Park to that space? And the second thing is, would it impact in any way safety measures as we look at Dearborn?
Laura, I don't know if you can speak to those questions?
I think I can. So I believe that with the infrastructure relocation that needs to occur really beginning in August, August is anticipated. It would be safe to say that the Beverly Park itself, I know we've had some inquiries as the Mission Project, I think, has a walk or something in September where you typically use that park. I don't think just, there will be enough activity in and around that area that we probably would not allow for that to occur. The reference, the council hasn't formally relocated Beverly Park, but we've talked about converting and at the time that you approved the initial performance agreement in February of 2024, you designated the existing city parcels along the Rock Creek Trail, particularly a couple of ones there at Outlook, excuse me, as Parkland. And so I know we are looking at how to begin to implement some of the things that were included in the Rock Creek Corridor Study that was done recently. We had an internal meeting looking at, at a minimum, re-greening those spaces immediately. Now, there will be some delay because you'll recall that we are doing the large stormwater infrastructure project through that section. So our hope is that by the time we get through 2026 and early 2027, that area will provide some additional green space and we will be happy to work with Mission Project through that to look for other areas adjacent to that would be safe and amenable to their activities. The other thing that I might mention is that we have launched into the Safe Streets For All study and we're looking at traffic and pedestrian safety throughout the city. We're moving into, I think, Stephanie, you'll be at the market Thursday, this Thursday? Tomorrow night to start taking comments. There's some, the website is up and I know that if we haven't done it already, the Mission Project is on our list of folks to reach out to as part of the stakeholder group because we know how much they use and rely on our street and transportation network. So we will certainly be looking at, obviously, the development of that project and its impacts in and around that area. And they'll have an opportunity to contribute to that as well. But we can certainly be in contact and communication throughout the construction and development process.
Seeing no other hands, I will now close the public hearing on the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance, Rock Creek TIFF District Number Four. This matter will be further discussed during our first action item. So our first action item this evening is related to the Tax Increment Financing Ordinance for Rock Creek TIFF District Number Four. Laura, would you like to introduce this item sort of again?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I think Mr. Wimpy mentioned what's before you this evening is an ordinance which wrapped up in the adoption and consideration of that ordinance. Are several things which would be approval of the redevelopment project plan for the TIFF District Number Four and then approving the execution of an amended and restated performance agreement for this project. I failed to mention, I do know that when we initiated and opened the public hearing last week at the city council meeting, there were a couple of neighboring and adjacent property owners within that TIFF District Four who were here. If you saw some faces that you didn't recognize in the audience, one of whom I'd been in conversation with leading up to that and others who had received the notices and I think felt comfortable with the information that they received as a part of that public hearing process and the really lack of impact to their properties specifically. So again, as Mr. Wimpy mentioned, it does take a two-thirds majority of the city council to approve the TIFF project plan. And again, we're all here and able to stand for any additional questions you might have.
First up, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on our action item? Again, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Please note that speakers will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone online, Justin? Don't see any audience hands, so we'll move into comments or questions from the council. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Yes, Leah?
I just want to thank Laura and, and, sorry. And for your constant work on this and your creative problem solving, I do think that this is going to be a great project in the area and will really bring a lot of benefit. So I appreciate, again, working together and coming up with creative solutions.
Thank you. It's definitely been a team effort, so I appreciate those. But that praise goes to everybody who's had their hands in it for the last several months.
Yes, I would second that. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance making findings and, one, adopting a tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for Rock Creek Redevelopment District Number Four. And, two, approving the execution of a first amendment to the performance agreement between the city and Mission Beverly LLC.
Motion is second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Tosi?
Aye.
Kringle?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everybody. Our second item this evening is related to the approval of a task order for the design of 7301 Johnson Drive Storm Sewer Project. Brent, would you come introduce this item?
Thank you very much. Yes, this is a task order with Olson for Design Services for a sinkhole that appeared on May 21st, 2025 on the property at 7031 Johnson Drive. We were notified by the property owner that there was a large hole formed in the ground. We immediately contacted Kissick, who does a lot of our video inspections. We couldn't access the pipe because we could access a portion of the pipe, but the section that has collapsed, we can't get a camera to. But with being able to, the camera, you can penetrate it from above the ground and find out where the pipe's running. So we were able to figure out the alignment of the pipe and it lined up exactly with the sinkhole. So it took a couple of weeks to get that figured out to make sure it was actually city infrastructure that failed. So after we got that figured out, we went to Olson, fast-tracked a task order in the amount of $58,109 for emergency repairs to fix a large segment of this pipe. It's not a all-in fix, it's 36-inch CMP, but we're going from an existing box called, we're under MedCaf, to a sinkhole we probably fixed about seven years ago. So we're fixing the segment where we won't have problems anymore and kind of realigning it on city property, not private property, but a small portion of it is on private property right now. So abandoning that, straightening it out and putting a good HDP back in and still making that property viable later down the road. It's the old NEFLot that we tore out of the building, if anybody's curious. So looking for approval with Olson for a task order for Design Services for $58,109. And there are sufficient funds in the stormwater utility fund to complete this task order. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brent? All right, seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this issue? If you are participating through Zoom, again, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council authorize a task order with Olson. Just with Olson?
Yes.
Okay. For stormwater design services at 7031 Johnson Drive.
Motion is second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Tosi?
Aye.
Kringle?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Our final action item this evening is related to a new animal sheltering services contract. Chief Madam, will you please introduce this item?
Wish I stood before you with better news. We have, since learning that our current vendor has terminated their contract with us, that's effective July 5th, we have been desperately trying to locate another animal shelter that has the capacity and the willingness to take on additional clients. We have not been successful to this point. We have reached out to shelters as far as an hour away and even did some contemplating about what it would look like if we had to go to the Missouri side of the state line or sheltering. We're still working through that process, but as of now, our city attorney's office believes that we would be required to get a certificate of veterinary inspection for every animal that we would transport across state line if we needed to use a shelter in Missouri. So we have one possibility that we're working on. Just the communication is kind of slowly moving along and hopes that we have some resolution before that July 5th and are able to move forward with something that I think Laura will speak about next. Any questions about the processes that we've gone through at this point?
Any questions for Chief? Yeah, Wanda?
I just have several questions. I, so can they just terminate like that? Why, is there a reason or?
Well, they didn't provide us a direct reason. It was a condition in this contract that either party had the right to terminate with a 30-day notice.
And we've been doing business with them how long?
Approximately two years.
Two. And how many animals do we, do they get to take or shelter?
Well, the city of Mission provides animal control services for Fairway, Westwood, Mission Woods, and Westwood and Westwood. Mission Woods and West, Westwood and Westwood Hills, and Roland Park. I probably said one of those cities twice.
We go around collecting dogs from all those areas? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we, they contract with us to provide that service for their communities. And then we, we go and if they have an issue with an animal, then we resolve it. And if there's an animal that needs to be sheltered, we take care of that.
So how many?
We, we average approximately between 10 and 15 animals a month that we have.
Well, I'm not willing to do it.
That sounded like you were thinking about it. We can talk.
It's all kennels in his office.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that is a good question. Do we have a temporary plan for, if we haven't identified a permanent solution by July 5th?
I think we'll have a, I think we'll have a temporary plan in place. It's just a matter of working out those details. And I think there's some travel issues with the, the vendor that we're, that we're working with. That is, hopefully that's the reason that is delaying that process. But we will, we have reached out to, to other animal control agencies to see if there might be some, some room. And, and we were told that, you know, if you're in a very, very hard place, let us know and we'll see what we can do to help. But there are no, no guarantees for availability there.
I think I just, just for historical purposes, so for many years, we had Northeast Animal Control Commission, which had a kind of separate governing board and body. And it was just, it really wasn't financially sustainable. And so I think it was in 2019, the Northeast Animal Control Commission disbanded and Mission hired community service officers who, part of their job was animal control services. We had historically taken animals to Unleashed. And so we transitioned to Melissa's Second Chances a couple of years ago when Unleashed ran into some of the licensing issues and concerns with that. I believe, not 100% sure, but I believe that we were the only city that Melissa's Second Chances was taking impound animals for. So it wasn't really part of their rescue operations, I don't think, historically. Again, they didn't give any specific reason.
So we, we actually go out and get the strays, our, our employees, is that correct?
Yes.
And then you transition them to a shelter?
Yes.
Okay.
Then the owners, you know, there's a wide variety of reasons why animals are, are taken to a shelter, whether it be, you know, the death, a death of a resident that has a pet with no family to claim or, you know, somebody gets arrested with an animal in a car. There's a wide variety of reasons why that can happen. And they, they go and they can redeem their animal under those circumstances.
Now, those other cities pay us to do that?
Yes.
Pick up their, okay. Is it a certain amount of money a month or is it per animal?
The, we're, we're meeting actually tomorrow to discuss how, how we're going. We, we've had a billing process in place that was a little bit more convoluted than what we would like to see. And so we're going to meet tomorrow to discuss that with those other cities and about, you know, that cost sharing moving forward.
So basically, this is a zero sum that it, it doesn't cost the city. It's, it, it brings in its own funds, right? It pays for itself or no?
It doesn't pay for itself entirely because the, the community service officers have a wide variety of duties besides animal control. They take care of walk-in police reports and, you know, when people need to get fingerprinted for jobs or whatever the case might be, they handle that. They do car seat installations, a lot of different community-related events that they, they handle.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Yeah, Ben?
I was just curious, I assume other cities that do their own animal control but don't have their own shelters, if there are any, or in similar, like it's probably a tight market for everybody, right?
It is. And that's, you know, the vast majority of, of cities use Great Plains SPCA. We have reached out to them. They have absolutely zero room for any more contracts in their capacity.
Okay.
I would now see if there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this issue. Again, if you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak. And we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated. And we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Seeing none, are there any additional comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council authorize the mayor, city administrator and chief of police to enter into an animal sheltering services contract through December 31st, 2025, as long as the anticipated costs do not exceed the city administrator's expenditure authority of $30,000.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Vaughn?
Yes, I, I.
Chosey?
Aye.
Hayden Chumposi?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yes.
Ryer?
Aye.
Schmid?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missioncs.org. There being no further items on our agenda this evening and no further action necessary, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mayor, really, very quickly.
Yes.
You want it?
Yeah, Mayor, so it looks like we had a bit of a discrepancy on the task order with Olson with the address.
Oh.
The address should be 7031 Johnson Drive. The agenda, I believe, says 7301 and therefore the motion said 7301. So we'll correct the minutes.
The motion is 7031 because I saw that too.
Great, thank you.
And Mayor, I would just, I always like to say thank you to Josh and Jacob and Oscar for coming to spend a Wednesday evening with us. We always enjoy having them here. And for sure, they don't have to be here, we do, but great to see their face.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking forward to their great feedback when we get them involved with Safe Streets For All because I know Mission Project did a really great job on our Rock Creek projects and coming out for the walk and ride and giving us really valuable input. So that'll be great. Thank you, guys.
And I'm sure any of us would like to hear feedback about the develop, the potential development and any impacts that has on that organization because that organization came first and we're going to look out for them.
All right, so I think we had a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned and we will.